To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to agenda item number three, approval of minutes. Minutes from the work session on May 4th, the 11th meeting on May 9th, and the 12th meeting on May 23rd, 2022. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, make a motion to approve the work session on Wednesday, May the 4th, the 11th meeting on May the 9th, and the 12th meeting on May 23rd.
All right, can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. All right, now, moving on to agenda item number four, report of the Mayor and City Council. I'll start with myself. On August 6th, I will be hosting a music and arts festival called Carrefesta at the Laurel Lake, the Granville Jude Park. You'll see posts about it in the upcoming weeks for the whole community and surrounding the Caribbean and African parts of our community to celebrate them. All right, move on to Councilman Cole.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. June has been pretty busy so far. June 12th through 15th, I was with the rest of council at the Maryland Municipal League Annual Conference. I've started taking the Academy for Excellence in Local Governments. I'm about halfway through that. On the 17th, I attended the Summer Concert Series from Parks and Rec where I watched Decades Band. This past Saturday on the 25th, I participated in the Laurel Historical Society Laurel Garden Tour. Sunday, the 26th, I stopped by the Laurel Police Department's first block party at the Town Center. It was a huge success. And then just a couple dates coming up that I wanted to keep everybody aware of. October 8th will be Laurel Pride. To do this, we will have some fundraisers coming up this Thursday. Anytime of the evening, starting at 4 o'clock, Cecil's Bar off of Main Street is having a pride party. On July 10th, Oliver's Old Town Tavern is having fundraiser there for us as well from 1:00 to 4:00. Both of those events proceeds from the revenue during the timeframe will be donated to Laurel Pride Committee. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Cole. Moving on to Councilman DeWalt.
Good evening, everyone. It's great to have an in-person meeting instead of looking at people through that computer. This past Saturday, I attended the Laurel Garden Tour put on by the Laurel Historical Society, and it started at Main Street at the museum, and we went to nine different locations throughout the city. And it was quite something to see how people that I don't have that knowledge or skill of keeping my garden that nice, but how they really, really, it was just fabulous to see the plants and the flowers and the vegetables and stuff. And James is, he said he participated in it. It's more than participating. You should see the back of his yard and the front of his yard. I mean, there's not a weed in sight. There's all kind of vegetables and flowers and everything. And his, his, his yard is just fabulous if you, if you actually look at it. And that was a great time right there. And the biggest part of that was Laurel Elementary School. And the kids around Laurel Elementary School, they had strawberry plants, they had a lot of milkweed for the Monarch Caterpillars, they had a lot of different tomato plants and different flowers and things like that. And it's great to see what Laurel Elementary has done with the kids and getting them started early and getting their hands dirty. That's what the one person at Laurel Elementary said. That's the hardest part is having the kids get their hands dirty. I attended fundraiser Double T Restaurant for Laurel Cats. These restaurants that participate in fundraisers for our local charities, that's where a lot of our local charities get their money from. So please, if you see any come up, please participate, just like James was talking about, the Pride Day and with Oliver's Tavern. And they, and a lot of different restaurants really support the community very well. A shout out to my people, the seniors at the Salborne House. Be safe in walking across the street for all my seniors there, also at 4th and Main and 6th and Main. To the residents, which I've lost a lot of them, at the development company called Laurel 24 has bought four complexes throughout our city, and they've raised the rent. And imagine this would ever happen to you, from up from $600 all the way up to almost $1,200. And that's addition to what they're already paying. So a lot of these people who have been living there for a long, long time in these complexes, just because they've done some refurbishing and put sawed around the place and things like that, they've raised their rents extraordinarily high. And going from, we had a military guy over at Patuxent Place that had 14, his rent was $1,400, and he told me that this year the federal government had gave him an additional $10 raise for his rent. And his rent went up to $2,000. And he no longer lives there. A lot of the people that were living in these complexes no longer live there because they can't afford it anymore. And a big happy birthday to my best friend, Ben Stivik. He's a Special Olympics athlete. He, in the past, he's a Laurel resident in the past, he has participated in the National Summer Games for Special Olympics, and it's his birthday tomorrow. Happy birthday, Ben. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman DeWalt. Councilman Sidnor?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll do something different this, with my report this time. Like, we're coming up on Independence Day, and everybody celebrates Independence Day, but just retrack our history, right? I was reading something last night, actually watching a documentary last night, and it crossed this quote. He said, "Who controls the past controls the future, and who controls the present controls the past." And this guy named George Orwell, and I was like, wow, that's pretty deep, because history is all important to me. History controls public policies. And I say that for reasons, because let's go back, 1619, right? We ought to know that when the first enslaved came over in 1619, it was 20 of them in Jamestown. Then in 1776, the United States got their independence. But when the United States got independence, there still was slavery going on until 1865. Then 100 years later, you know, in 1964, when the Public Rights Bill was signed, 1964, to allow everyone equal process. So I think when we look back, and we celebrate our independence this weekend, else we celebrate June 10th, like, let's reflect on the history of how we got here. This is a great country, but why we don't tell the truth, the whole history? There's always question that. Not saying that we can't go back and take it back, what is done is done, or how can we improve, make things better? When we leave things out, it kind of question that quote like that. Who controls the past controls the future, and who controls the present controls the past. So just, you know, we reflect back on Independence Day, we know we got a great nation, but at the same time, let's reflect in how we make it better, because we still got a lot of work to do. So I just wanted to just talk about that today, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Sidnor. And lastly, Councilman Mitchell.
Thank you, Council President. Let me see where I'm starting. Oh, yeah, so just like Councilmember Cole said, I had the pleasure of attending my first MML Summer Conference down in Ocean City. So got to take some classes, got to meet elected officials from all over the state, and, you know, it was very powerful, the municipal connection. And on June 11th, I went to a housing coalition meeting of about 20 residents to talk about rent increases that they were facing, similar to Mr. DeWalt. And I was also at the meeting at the Patuxent Place with the tenants. It was about 15 of them that were experiencing, you know, record-high rent increases. On June 18th, I had my second expungement clinic with the Grace Life Center. And this was the second one this year, so in about two clinics, we were able to help 12 people clear their criminal record. So that was powerful, and we look to continue doing that in September and November, so every other month. And on the 16th of June, I attended the March for Dimes Alpha Phi Alpha fundraiser at Mad Cow Grill, and that was well-attended. I also went to the, the Garden Tour on this Saturday, the Laurel Historical Society put on. I didn't get to see all of the nine yards, but I will say that I got to see about three or four of them, and Councilmember Cole was one of them. And yes, it was immaculate, as Carl said. I went to the Juneteenth Celebration for the city. We had the Juneteenth Committee that, I guess this was their first, their first event. And so I look forward to, you know, seeing more events from the Juneteenth Committee. And I just wanted to also say happy birthday to Delegate Pina Melnick, one of my favorite delegates. And of course, she represents us in District 21. And then, you know, as this being the last meeting before Pride, I just want to say happy Pride Month again. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Mitchell. Moving on to agenda item number five, mayoral appointments of Alvin Smith Jr., Pride Day Celebration Planning Committee, and Jimmy Rogers, Environmental Affairs Committee. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the appointments, mayoral appointments of Alvin Smith to the Pride Day Celebration Planning Committee, and Jimmy Rogers to Environmental Affairs Committee.
Can I get a second?
I'll second that, Mr. President.
All right. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. All right. Moving on to agenda item number six, the general public hearing. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed up to speak?
Yes, sir. Mr. President, Eric Green has been assigned to you.
All right. Well, I'm gonna open the public hearing at 6:12 PM. Now, we'll call the first name on the list. Thank you, sir. All right, I have Connie Lucas. Yes. Can you press the button on the microphone until it turns green? Yes. Hold it down.
Sorry. Thank you, guys. I am not a speaker, and I'm probably gonna have to read what I'd like to say, because my nerves are not there. Okay. I'm coming to you because I don't even know if my request is an executive, can be turned into like an executive order, because I went and looked at this and looked at that, or it could be done in some other way. When my husband and I came here to Laurel, it was in 1970, there was a sign on 198 and Van Nuysen Road that reported our population, I think it was like 9,000 something, and then I can remember going to 14,000 or something. But then, the sign disappeared. I did not come here for the population sign, but in coming here, I said, it would be really a good thing to see that sign back up. You see the sign, people coming in, they see the sign, you look at it, you say, hey, I'm one of those people on that population sign, my family is there. And it kind of says, okay, I'm there, I'm here in Laurel. But today, I came here because I believe Laurel is losing its hometown identity. I believe that probably many other people here in Laurel think the same thing. We need, and I think we deserve, a local newspaper. The Baltimore Sun, I know, you get, you can go to the post office and get it, but it's usually like three to four folded pages, it has the grocery ad in between. But it, it has really, it does have a few really informative articles, but I never, I don't see anything about Laurel itself mentioned. Since it has been turned over to the Sun, and they're the publishers, and this was way before Maryland had the shutdown, you just don't see anything about Laurel being said in that paper. Somehow, sometimes you go there and you pick up the paper in front of the, in the container in front of the post office box, and sometimes if there's none there, you have to go to the police station to pick them up. I don't get every paper, so I don't know what's in every of them, every one of them. I'm just saying what I have seen. Now, going back quite a few years, before Patuxent Publishing went out of business, the Laurel Leader, it reported on school, upcoming events and shows that were going on, things that were happening at the park and rec information, sports functions, boys and girl scout events, and local business news. When my son, he was on the Laurel Swim team, a picture in the Laurel Swim, in the leader of the, he was swimming the fly, and there he is, the whole paper. It was the, his picture and like two or three other 10x8 articles saying what was going on with the swim team and all of that. And it's been hanging on my wall since 1994. And even when I look at it, it still makes me smile. The swim team kids could also count on their names being in the newspaper, the Laurel Leader, who swam, what at the meet, and who won the meet, and all that kind of stuff. Even if pictures, any kind of pictures that was given to the Laurel Leader, they published and put in, and the kids could see themselves in the paper. And I think absolutely nothing makes a parent or child light up more than seeing themselves or their names in a, in the newspaper. And they say, hey, this is me, I, I live in Laurel. But just recently, I have spent a lot of time going around and about and on the line at the Laurel City site. I mean, kinda, I'm not good at computer stuff. I feel that a lot of the city, Laurel City site is used for the residents that already know what they want to do, and the clubs that they already know what they want to be in or do. So I'm not sure about that, but that's, when looking at it, that's what I was getting. I would like to see, and believe many residents of Laurel would want to see, a weekly local newspaper telling about our businesses, our schools, our clubs, and the news that's going, and the news and things that's going on here in Laurel. I am requesting that Laurel City consider financially subsidizing a local newspaper with Laurel taxpayer dollars. I don't have any idea of what needs to be done, or what the cost is, or even how to approach this request to you guys. The newspaper would need a location and employees, like a manager, editor, reporters, and all that kind of stuff. And I know that Patuxent Publishing did not make it because of money. But perhaps if they were given a little bit of subsidy way back when, they could have made it, but I don't know. Depending on how many residents we have, printing and mailing through the post office costs are unknown. And the reason I say bite the bullet on, to pay a post office cost, is some residents in the neighborhood, they either don't know what the Laurel Leader was, or didn't really want it, and they'd leave it in the street, and then other, well, other neighbors would pick them up and stuff. But if someone got the newspaper in their mailbox, they would pull it out, they would look at it, and even if they didn't want it, they would throw it in the regular trash. So that's how I would, I feel about that. Okay, advertising with everything, it's a precarious situation, but would add to funding of the paper, probably in a small way. Soliciting of individual donations may account for some further funding. It's not a lot, but I can donate like a thousand a year to other people. Yes, am I over time?
Yeah, you are over time, but I will say, we did put them in the budget for a newspaper here, it just doesn't come weekly. And our city administrator can give you a little more information on that right now, if you don't mind.
Sure, I would just like to say, like Council President said, with our most recently passed budget, the city will be having a monthly newspaper entitled The Laurel Independent that will start next month. And I can give you my information, and we could talk more about it offline. My mic's not working, but we will have a new newspaper coming back to the city for city residents and everything that's taking place.
Okay, may I finish? Because I'm not sure that's exactly, you know, what I was going after. I'm not sure. And it might be exactly what you guys are gonna do. I don't know.
It, it's just that the three minutes were up, and I didn't, I didn't want to be fair to the rest of the people.
Can you give me two more minutes? Gentlemen, do you mind?
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Okay. If the, I was thinking if the taxpayers agree to providing money to help the city fund a newspaper, and you would tell me how many signatures that you would need and all that kind of stuff to get it going. But somewhere in the back of my head, I'm thinking there's restrictions on taxpayer money being used for newspapers. It's something with government control, and the city wouldn't, and the city would not be able to control anything to do with the newspaper, would just give money as like a blank thing. That's my opinion of it. It wouldn't have, the city wouldn't have any kind of power to ban any information submitted for publication, and somehow, it would be stated in the funding of this, of the newspaper, of whatever, however you guys can figure out how to do it. This Laurel City could set forth a funding of a local newspaper as a, it would be an entire. Will it work that way, gentlemen?
Yes.
If anybody on the street will look at that paper and say, I don't want to put this in it.
They can, I believe, it's not, I don't believe it's ours, we're just paying for a subscription in it.
So it's a complete separate entity?
Yes, yes.
Okay, okay. I'm sorry, I wasted you guys' time.
We'll get you the information on that. No problem. Thank you. All right, next, so we do have a three-minute rule, I was, we were lenient, so I just want everyone to be mindful to try to compact your information into the three minutes, just to be respectful of everyone's time tonight. All right, next I have Venny. I don't want to mess up your last name, so. De Olivera? I'm trying to read the. Okay, that's a L. Okay. And Venny, can you please state your name and address when the mic comes?
Sorry for this.
Don't apologize unless you meant to do this.
We need more equipment.
So, can everybody hear me okay? Venny De Olivera, 7641, Woodbine Drive, Laurel, Maryland, 20707. Do I just speak from the heart? All right, beautiful. Well, hello, everybody. Listen, my, my objective this afternoon was to highlight some information about our eco-friendly products, which we know can help save time, money, and peace of mind for the city of Laurel. Ladies and gentlemen, my name is Venny De Olivera. I'm the president of XCT Life. We are an MBE supplier for eco-friendly products. We are also a certified Prince George County, and also a city-based firm right here in the city of Laurel, where we provide green and innovative products for fleets of vehicles. Look, I'm just gonna get right into it. I'm just gonna talk about, I have two products right now where, you know, we can't avoid unexpected obstacles out there where it can easily puncture a tire, you know? We have a product that, that's biodegradable, that can go into any tire that prevents flash due to punctures, prevents blowouts, and it ultimately extends the life of the tires. Councilman Mitchell, you know all those tire cases that you see up and down 95, sir?
Yes.
Yeah, so those are called blowouts, and those happen quite frequently, and it is very scary. I personally seen a few blowouts occur off of 495, going back shattering windshields, but I just thank God, that's all I saw. But there's a product out there that we are now doing business with the State Highway Administration, the Maryland Transit Administration, and also Prince George County Fleet. And what we want to do is, we want to be able to provide that for the city that we reside in. Now, what I would like to do is see if we, our main product is, is a burn rate modifier, and what that does is that it helps reduce the soot and the smoke, you know, the black smoke that comes out the exhaust, it helps eliminate that, but also increases their fuel mileage. Right now, right next to the city of Laurel, the State Highway Administration, we're setting up a pilot, and we partnered with Carroll Fuel, who's now providing fuel for the entire state of Maryland, and we're setting up a pilot program for there and the Hanover locations, because they have seen what we've done with other municipalities, like your sister city there, the, the city of Tacoma Park. We have a product where we're saving 10% on a total fuel bill for just 2.5% of the cost. So what I would like to do is, I can love the schedule of time, so I can show the analytics of what we're doing with different municipalities throughout the state of Maryland, and I would love to do that for the city that we reside in. Thank you very much. Or, or is there any questions? Because there's no dumb questions. I know I, I just spoke a lot, but is there any questions and or concerns or what ifs? No questions. Do you have something to submit to us, just to even look at? Absolutely. Well, what I would love to do, I have my business card, but what I would love to do is, is connect with the people who is, who are the decision-makers, and say, hey, look, this is what we're doing with different municipalities.
I'll take your information, and I'll get it to the right people.
Thank you. And you are?
Joanne Farr.
Thank you very much.
I have just one question for you.
Ask away, please.
The tire blowouts that you're talking about, are these for large trucks, or are they for all the tires?
They are for any, anything that takes wheels. So what it is, is that it's a They are for any, anything that takes wheels, so what it is, is that it's a raw ceramic fibers, and I shouldn't be sharing this, I don't know if I'm gonna get in trouble or not, but I know that the, again, I'm, the city of Tacoma Park, there's a lot of police cruisers, where it's difficult for them to get their, their, because they take the police cruisers home, it's difficult for them to bring it in to do services. But when they, when they get a puncture on the side of the tire, they want that thing fixed quick. So our, our product is, it, it punctures the tires in the raw ceramic fibers, when you pull the nail out, it cross hatches, and has a hook like a fish hook, and permanently repairs the tire. Now, we, we focus on the big truck tires, and the reason being is because right now, I'm sure the city uses, because I know my other clients use it, they purchase this thing called Equal, and it's a bag that they throw in there, which help balances the tires, which costs about twenty dollars per tire. For the same cost for our product, you'll get it to balance, but it also will help extend the life of the tire, because during the winter, the, the summertime, there's a lot of cracks that happens on the tires, and they're using what's called recap tires. And those blowouts that you see up and down the highway, I know none of the traction crews go there, but again, my goal is to present this, we've already presented to the State Highway Administration, who is, we're now doing a pilot with, and we, again, we want to do the same thing for the city of Laurel. But it's, to answer your question, it's, it's a raw ceramic fiber, and when a puncture occurs, it's a very intelligent product, it just goes in there and starts repairing the tire together, and it extends the life of the tire up to thirty-five percent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I've got one question.
Absolutely.
Have you done any pilots with the, the fuel modifier, like in, in Prince George's County municipalities?
Yes, we have. Well, the biggest one is, we've done M T A out in Baltimore, that's the one that I'm, I'm proud of. I have a powerful testimony from one of our local businesses here, Unity Disposal and Recycling, who says, hey, look, we've been using your tire reparative now for about ten years, but I'm not, I'm not gonna be a test dummy for this fuel product, get one of your other clients to use this. So we did just that, we went to M T A, and we went, we went through it. They were like, look, we're not gonna put this thing in here, is it gonna violate warranties? Is it gonna do this, is it gonna do that? So once we provided all the documentation, and they approved it, we went through and did our test. And next to the holy bible, the most important document I have is the test results from a third-party company that shows that we were saving M T A almost seven percent on fuel consumption, but they were more excited about what it did for reduction in emissions. We think we save almost twenty percent over there, and I would, again, what I like to do is just share the information, and then we set up, set up what's called a pilot program, and just start utilizing the product, get it going. So, and I'll end it with this, for anybody that does numbers, and it might be you, and I'm, so, because, so my personal vehicle, and I'm gonna use my, so I had a Lexus I S two fifty, and I used to get about seventeen point three miles per gallon. And this was back in twenty twelve, where gas was similar to what it is now, right? It's a little scary. And every three days, I was putting seventy dollars in my gas tank. And then I was introduced to this product, because I had a tire reparative, a product that could help extend the life of the tire, then you have another product, a product here that can extend the life of the fuel, it just made sense to merge it together. So I was going through my trial, and I went from seventeen point three miles per gallon to, during the winter times, twenty-seven miles per gallon, and during the summer blend fuel, thirty-five miles per gallon. But I was saving, I was spending seventy dollars every three day, every three days I was putting seventy dollars in my gas tank. But instead of going every three days, I was going every six to seven days, and instead of seventy dollars, it cost me about forty-six dollars to fill up, because I didn't have to use a premium fuel, that lets me require I got to use the eighty-seven gas. And now, I'm able to do this for, again, the state of Maryland, but it's a must that I do that in the city that I reside in, been doing business with, and for about twenty-two years now. Thank you. And forgive me, because my daughter is calling me for Peace Corps, so, baby. All right. Next on the list, we have Gabe.
Is this on? My name's Gabriel Manicon, I live at seven eight oh five Sasser Lane, Upper Marlboro, Maryland, not Laurel, but it's interesting to be here. I was just wondering if Laurel was gonna do anything for July fourth, any like parades or like celebrations, if there was anything going on? Then I have a few things in Upper Marlboro that I'll be personally attending.
We, we actually are July second.
July second?
Uh huh.
So July second, we'll have a parade starting at two o'clock, and then we'll have a ceremony at Goody Park down at the lake at seven o'clock, fireworks will be about nine fifteen. There's also a car show and a couple other activities throughout the day.
When's the car show?
Car show, I don't know the exact time, I believe it starts at two thirty.
And it goes till five or six.
It's all, all day affair.
And we have the best fireworks around. We have our own committee, and they do the, they do a fabulous job.
The best ones to keep you safe, so.
And where would all this be?
Laurel Lakes. Laurel Lake.
Laurel Lake.
Yeah, you'll love it. So Granville Ju, Judy Park, Goody Park.
Right next to the town center.
Right behind Cheetos Mexican Restaurant.
Google Maps will help me out.
Oh yeah.
Just follow the people, you'll see them.
All right, thank you, guys.
No problem.
Thank you.
And last on our list, I see Rhonda Wood.
Rhonda, thank you, and thank Madam Clerk for the invitation to be present today. I wanted to come and announce myself and introduce myself. I am now running for a circuit court judge here in Prince George's County, Maryland. I have resided here in Prince George's County in Bowie since nineteen ninety-three. I have been practicing law since December sixteenth, nineteen ninety-three. It's almost thirty years I was sworn in on my mother's birthday. Ever since then, I stood about, I have, I have four children that I take care of that are matriculating through the Prince George's County system, the public school system. Two have graduated, one has her master's degree, the other one has her college degree. I have two more coming. In terms of my legal career, I spent about three years at the state's attorney's office prosecuting the major crimes in the circuit court for Prince George's County, Maryland. I did the major crimes in all units, I did the district court, the circuit court, and the juvenile court. I then went over to private practice, where I've spent the bulk of my practice has been private practice. I have been representing citizens in all circuit court cases throughout Prince George's County and the neighboring jurisdictions. I practice civil law, criminal law, family law, adoptions, circuit court cases. I still, I still do overflow public defender work, I do everything throughout the prosecution, I mean, throughout this Prince George's County, Maryland. I went up through and was vetted and, and vetted and approved through the judiciary nominating committee on two occasions, both for the district court and the circuit court. I come here today with an abundance of experience, that I believe that I would make an asset to the court, to the Prince George's County system. Prince George's County, we have a very good bench, we have a very good bench. But I think because of my diverse background, that includes both criminal, civil, prosecution, and public defender work, I believe that I would be an asset to the bench. In addition to, in addition to my legal practice and my legal qualifications, I am also, I do much work in the community service arena. I work with the children, I work with the best interest attorney, I mentor, as well as I practice law, I'm on the Prince George's County Bar Association, I'm on the Board of Directors for the Prince George's Bar Association, Maryland State Bar Association. I've published various articles, publications, I have done radio news broadcasts for against domestic violence, as well as I'm active with the community, the Lupus Foundation, breast cancer awareness, and I also practice doing the expungement events, again, to help people clean their record to get a good job. I feel like I've spent my life practicing law here, I've spent thirty years listening to people tell their story about how they feel, why they may end up where they are, why they're in court that day, and you listen to that story, and you make the best, best decision that can be made. I'm here to make sure that the public citizens, that not only are they protected, but that society is protected, and you have some of the experience that's gonna go on that bench and make a difference for the positive, and protect not only our citizens, but also this, not only our citizens with criminal behavior, but also protect the family unit. I thank you very much for your help, and I hope I can gain your support for voting day on July nineteenth. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you. Have a nice day.
All right. That is the last person signed up on our, that is the last person signed up on the list. I'm gonna close the public hearing at six thirty-seven P M. And I'm going to move on to agenda item number seven. Someone else sign to speak? Okay, you can, you can come up. Please just state your name and your address.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Anya Malharova, and I reside at seven nine three nine Ashford Boulevard. I'm here to inform you of one of the practices that falls under your control that I'm personally not pleased with. So I live right at Laurel Lakes, at the smaller lake. And on my side of Laurel Lake, we have a white fence that was installed several years ago. So that side of the lake is not suitable for walking, it's completely private property. I hope that you are familiar with that particular part of the lake. Across from us is, is another bank which actually has a public, a public trail, right? So people, people can walk there. So the issue that I wanted to bring to your attention is that, starting this year, the city lawn mower contractor began cutting the grass, not just between my property and the white fence, but now between the white fence and the actual lake. Okay? So first of all, that, the way the fence is installed, the difference, the distance between the fence and the lake, it varies greatly, right, along the bank. And we used to have a lot of, a lot of wild, wild growing flowers, beautiful flowers and shrubs. We have very little wilderness left at Laurel Lakes. I do routinely still see some deer, some hares, we have, you know, obviously squirrels, we have a lot of wild geese, and insect. I mean, when was the last time you guys saw a ladybug when passing on our, around Laurel Lakes? You never see them, and guess why? Because they cannot exist in a grass that, that's this long. And I don't mind, you know, public grass spaces, like the distance between the actual fence and the private property, or the other side of the bank, that, which obviously has to be maintained, because there is a public trail there. But what about the little strip that we had? There is no reason for it to be mowed. And furthermore, you know, it has to be understood, you cannot get there with the big equipment that possibly collects some of those clippings. All of those clippings, guess where they go? They go into our lake. And, and based on some research that my neighbor and I did, it's not healthy, it's not healthy for Laurel Lakes, it's just not, not a good practice. So I just, I, I'm not sure whom I should contact, but this is, you know, it's a very simple thing to fix, in my opinion, as a resident, and I would really appreciate your attentions to this matter, because while other cities and jurisdictions understand, you know, the world that we live in, and how it takes everybody, you know, I recycle, I'm your compost program recipient, right, so are some of my fellow neighbors. So we're really trying to do our part, but when we see some of these practices, I feel like it's my duty to bring this to your attention. And furthermore, like, I mean, my, some of my neighbors and I, we are so passionate about preserving the little wilderness that we do have, we actually brought additional wildlife seeds, because we want, you know, we wanted to actually have more flowers, wild, you know, local, local flowers in that area, and all of those seedlings were cut. And also, I wanted to emphasize that there is, you know, some double work that's going on, because the distance that's between the fence and the private property, it's been mowed not only by your contractors, but also by my homeowners association. So I would appreciate any action that you can take, if it's not something in your immediate purview, I wouldn't, I would appreciate any guidance that you can provide for me to, you know, so that this matter does get addressed. Thank you so very much, I appreciate your time.
Thank you. I will officially close the general public hearing now at six forty-one P M. And we'll move on to agenda item number seven, thank you for that. Second public hearing with possible action on resolution number four dash twenty-two. Resolution four dash twenty-two, a resolution of the mayor and city council of Laurel, Maryland, for the purpose of designating the city of Laurel, Maryland as a B city USA affiliate and providing an effective date. I've read the title into the record for the second reading. Madam Clerk, is there anyone signed to speak?
Mr. President, there's no one signed up on this item.
All right, I'm gonna open the public hearing at six forty-two P M, and I'm gonna close the public hearing at six forty-two P M. I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'll make a motion, that we adopt resolution number four dash two two.
And can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Mr. President.
All right, any discussion? All right, Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. DeWalt?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Sidnor?
Yes.
President Smith?
Yes. All right, and, well, that being the last agenda item, there being no further business to come before the mayor and city council tonight, this meeting is adjourned.